The first order of business will be the approval of the July admitting minutes. I have a question for the solicitor, please. It was not posted on the agenda. Just says approval of minutes, but it doesn't say what we'll still be able to approve those minutes?
Well, we did continue with our last meeting to this meeting. I would say go ahead with it. You don't want to be stuck with an open minutes violation that you didn't plan to approve in two minutes. And if they're the only outstanding minutes that haven't been approved, then it could be no use if you just don't approve them. So I will change direction on everything that's been discussed.
The motion that we continue with?
No, no, no.
Oh, favor?
Aye.
Oh. Okay, sitting as the Board of Appeals, we'll be listening to making and be making a decision for the Lanning Shops LLC, Rocket Real Estate LLC, Federal Properties of Rhode Island Incorporated, Eleven States Street LLC, and Moody's Realty LLC. Mark, how should we proceed with this?
At this point, I would recommend a formal vote closing the public hearing aspect because the timing of the decision starts from the time the public hearing is closed. So I would formally do that. It was discussed last time. Nobody took a formal vote, which I wouldn't have advocated because I wouldn't have wanted to be time to start running at that point. But obviously now's the time, and I would request that you entertain a motion to close the public hearing, and then you continue with your discussion.
Mr. Chairman, in the appeal of Lanning Shops, Rocket Real Estate, Federal Properties, Eleven States Street, and Moody's Realty Matter 2018-36, I approve that the public record is appealed with respect to the Bristol Historic District Commission be closed.
One second.
Oh, favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, the public hearing was closed. Now we will discuss about the vote.
Right, you know. I'll open the discussion. There's a lot of things that we were shown and told, and we reviewed the record. It's really a lot, a lot to absorb, but my focus, I don't, I didn't see any real procedural issues. I can see an issue with a combined meeting. What I did see an issue with was the dismissal of the expert testimony that challenged the project and the scale. And there was an opportunity offered by the vice chairman to explain why that wasn't in the record, and there really wasn't an explanation. So I do have an issue that if you're going to pick one and they have diametrically opposed opinions, then there should be something in the record that indicates how that decision was reached. And I don't see it in the evidence, and I didn't see it in the testimony from the appeal ruling.
If I name Mr. Chair and Mr. Vice Chair, perhaps I just should reiterate the standard that we're guided by tonight and go from there. I apologize, Mr. Burke, I should have done it before you spoke. That was fine.
I don't think you have to, Mr. Hayden. I'll take that as part of what I was going to say, and if I get it wrong, correct.
That's fine. Great, thank you.
So both our solicitor and counsel for the parties who were here at the initial proceeding made it quite clear to us that the Board, the zoning Board of Review sitting as a Board of Appeals should not reverse the action taken by the Historic District Commission unless it were defined from the record that there was prejudicial procedural error or that there was clear error or that there is a lack of support for the decision made by the Historic Commission by the weight of the evidence that is in the record. I think that was the standard that was elucidated or the word by all of the attorneys at the last opportunity for us to. And like Mr. Burke, in reviewing the record, I didn't see prejudicial procedural error. Since I'm not sure what clear error is, outstanding instruction from counsel the last time, I don't know that I saw a clear one. However, I am, as Mr. Burke is, quite concerned that there was no or almost no discussion in the transcripts of the various hearings before the Historic District Commission on the, not just expert testimony, but other evidence that was submitted by the objectors with respect to heights of other buildings and vertical and horizontal thrust and a bunch of material that related to the difference standards that the Historic District Commission was supposed to have been basing its determination and decision upon. There is in the decision itself conclusory language addressing those standards, conclusively findings with regard to compatibility with massing proportions, scale, and size, and spatial relationships of the surrounding environment. But that conclusion is not supported by any specific findings of fact that would go to the surrounding environment and the compatibility. So it's very difficult on an appellate review to find exactly what weight the Historic District Commission was given to the evidence that was produced by the objectors. And while Mr. Tights at the last meeting suggested that the Historic District Commission did not find the evidence of those other experts and witnesses credible, that is not found in the decision that they didn't find that evidence credible. So I have great difficulty figuring out whether the decision as it's expressed and memorialized is or is not supported by the weight of the evidence in the record. There certainly is some evidence that supports their conclusion. We were instructed by Mr. Tights that as long as there's a scintilla of evidence that we should uphold the decision. I don't find that to be convincing. And what I would do, what I would suggest we do, is remand this back to Historic District Commission to review the various evidence and to indicate what evidence they attach weight to and why they don't attach weight to other evidence. So that's kind of the way I'm looking at this, is the decision is inadequate and unable for us to sustain as presented. I don't think that means we reverse it. I think we remand it back there and have them do a better job of determining what weight should be placed on what evidence that's still out.
I have one additional observation, and it had to do with adherence to the guidelines. And it was, seemed to me like they were discomfited. And I believe, I believe that the guidelines do need to be followed, and if they're not going to be followed, there has to be a rationalization of exactly why. So the guideline was, if there was a reason it was going to be changed in the future, then I should say, after several cases similar to this, the guidelines aren't going to be changed in two or three months or whatever it would be. And then I would, I'd be comfortable with the fact that the guidelines haven't been updated, but not as a reason for changing, changing or working in contrast on the guidelines.
Well, I have the same feeling about the lack of, the lack of evidence, the lack of evidence in the record and the lack of finding of facts. And I think the guidelines, obviously the guidelines were not followed. They have a set of rules, and they were kind of being around the rules. That's, I think, I think we should, like Bruce said, we should go back to the HCC and have over again, follow their own guidelines. And I think we can come up with that.
I'm in agreement that using that there's lack of evidence. To be honest, I have an issue with using a reference to a hotel that hasn't existed.
Sorry, can you use the mic, please?
I'm sorry. I do have, you know, using a hotel that hasn't existed in town for over 15 years, to me doesn't tell a, you know, example of similar structure.
I don't think it's just the guidelines. I think there's also a question of using the Secretary of the Interior standards, which require some particular findings with regard to the site and the environment. I think that's what I saw as largely conclusive. So that's my finding.
Good work. I'm in agreement.
Like you said, that must have been a change that was made on the type of move from the, from the, which I believe was, I don't say justified, but I mean, it was a good idea. It does look better, but it's just the way it was brought upon. Join me. That's, that's the only objection that I have on that. Everything else seems like it's pretty much, but we made a few classifications on certain items. That's about it.
I think motion, okay, I think we're all in agreement. Get sent back to the HCC.
Do you have anything you want to say, Mr. Wood?
I don't know.
I had a sense you were going to share some advice. Maybe I'm wrong.
The standard, just so you're clear, so that they're not being guided by standards that are different.
Can you use the mic?
It's not a mere scintilla. It's more than a mere scintilla of evidence. So the standard is if you find that their decision is supported by mere than a scintilla of evidence, then you must deny the appeal. If you find that their decision does not rise to the level of more than a mere scintilla, then you can reverse it and remand. I just want to make sure that on the record, we're clear as to the standards, that you're not deciding on a wrong standard, which would be an appeal issue.
I do understand that, and I, you know, I do think there were arguments by counsel that the evidence induced by the applicant was the expert evidence induced by the applicant was not from experts who were experts in the field of historic preservation or historic architecture, which might go to the weight of the evidence. But that again is not something that was assessed or evaluated by the Historic District Commission. So it's very difficult on appeal to determine whether the decision that they rendered was or was not supported by the weight of the evidence in the record.
I understand your point. I believe that is a reasonable way to look at it.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that the decision of the Historic District Commission dated July 12, 2018, be reversed and remanded back to the Historic District Commission for more specific findings of fact and discussion with regard to the weight that the commission was attaching to the various evidence from the various experts, architectural, historic preservation, and the like, in order to give the zoning Board of Review sitting as a Board of Appeals the opportunity to review whether or not the decision lacks or has support from the weight of the evidence in the record. That's my motion.
One second.
Oh, favor? Aye. Opposed?
I would also recommend that the motion itself specify the specific topic, the specific items that you feel were not supported by more than a mere scintilla. So it would not be enough to just send it back saying you didn't see how, you know, the experts were, their testimony was weighed or whatnot. But I think it would be your benefit as well as the benefit of the below if you would specify exactly what issues that you feel did not have more than a mere scintilla of support in the record as part of their decision.
So I'll amend my motion then with regard to remand back to the Historic District Commission for more specific findings and discussion with regard to Secretary of the Interior Standard Number One with respect to the characteristics of the site and the environment, Secretary of the Interior Standard Number Nine with respect to compatibility with the massing size, scale, and architectural features to protect the historic integrity of the property and its environment with regard to the Historic District Commission's own guidelines. For more specific findings with regard to new construction West Oak Street, general criteria, Three, with regard to the characterization of small businesses on conventional sized lots, small scale should be respected, and new projects should not require a combining of existing lots. And specific criteria under the new construction guidelines, West of Oak Street, on building shape, the relationship between the horizontal and vertical thrust of the structure should be designed in the context of historic buildings in immediate vicinity of the site. Those would be the specific areas that I would, that my motion would instruct the Historic District Commission to review all of the evidence attaching whatever weight the commission feels it's entitled to, you know, determining, at least indicating what the commission's judgment is with respect to the credibility of the evidence and witnesses that testify both for and against the project.
Thank you. Second.
Oh, favor? Aye. Opposed?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Michael Resnick on behalf of the appellate S and T Development Partners LLC, I seek additional clarification on the reverse and remand be restricted to the record as it presently stands in front of the Historic District Commission.
We can't hear him. We can't hear him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael Resnick on behalf of the appellate, and I just request clarification that the reverse and remand to the Historic District Commission be on the record as it stands in front of the commission at this time, that no additional evidence, whether it be testimonial or written, be taken.
I'd like to object to that.
Mr. Hayden, I don't.
Unless she represents a party or is a party.
No, no, why don't you help us on the point of counsel?
Oh, sorry. I went to the lady in the second row. The, if you're going to remand it, you're not remanding it unless you're remanding it for an entirely new hearing, which it seems to me you're not, nor do you have any intention to do so, nor would it probably be a very good idea. But, and that's one of the reasons I asked to specify so. When the board receives it, they know exactly what parts of their decision you have questioned and found at least indistinct and unclear, if not supported by more than a mere scintilla. In any event, as a result, you're not contesting the rest of the record. You're not asking for new plans or this or that or the other. It's a very focused remand, and so that it would be appropriate to make clear to the board that their receipt of the remand is solely confined to those issues that this board has raised, and the record otherwise should stand.
Yeah, I think that's correct. If I can be heard on that. Just a moment to come up to the mic for me.
You can ask what party you represent.
We, we, we. Stephen Gilroy on behalf of the appellant's.
I'm sorry, what's?
Mac Gilroy. M-A-C capital G-I-L-L-I-V-E's in Victor, R-A-Y. Thanks. My one concern with that is where things stand right now procedurally, you've scoured the record, and you found that there's not enough support on the record, and therefore you're remanding it. My concern is the record remains of closed universe, and it comes back to, how can you say the same record somehow has now evidence supporting, sufficient to support the applicant? That's my concern. I think you need to leave it to the Historic District Commission to determine whether they need to open up for additional evidence or not. Otherwise, I think you get yourself a kind of a bind in terms of having already looked at the record as a whole and coming up with a conclusion. That would be my, my concern, and I guess an objection to the proposal.
Mr. Chairman, I don't.
Respectfully, I don't believe that's what the board said here tonight. I don't believe that they said that the record doesn't have sufficient information. The issues that I heard outlined by Mr. Cogan were that findings were not made sufficient to support these particular categories as well as the weight or the credibility that was given to experts and other individuals that testified. So I don't think it's a question of whether the record, whether the materials there in the record. The question is, the board needs to look at the record as it stands before them and make findings of fact on these discrete areas that have been outlined and remanded to them. So I would object to any testimony, written testimony or any other evidence, even on these discrete points. It's our position that the record is as it stands, and that the Historic Commission should be remanded with those discrete directions to come back with findings that support their conclusion. Thank you.
My take on it is we're remanding it. It's up to the Historic District Commission to decide what it is they think they need to do at this point. I don't think you're instructing them to limit it. I don't think we're instructing them to open it up. I think we're remanding it with the reasons that were outlined in our motion to reverse it. I think if they feel they need to do more, they'll do more. If they feel they don't, they'll do a better decision.
Remands tend to be turkey things, as you've just found out. If this board is remanding it because you're unclear as to what they decided based on the entirety of the record that they had, then there's no need to expand the record. If you feel that there wholly isn't enough evidence in the record to support their decision, that's a different thing. If you look at the record and say there's absolutely no evidence, or I should say, there is not more than a scintilla of evidence that supports a decision for them to have made this decision A, this decision B, this decision C, at that point, you may wish to have them reopen for evidence. I can't say that you can send it back to have them reopen for evidence based upon what you've done so far. However, I think it needs to be made clear that if you want them to reopen for more evidence, that you have already come to a conclusion that they could not possibly have rejected expert testimony from appellants. Or for, you have competing experts. You have appellants who had experts, and they had, the appellees had experts. And apparently they made a choice as to who to believe. And in some circles with some judges, they would say, they don't have to tell me who they believe. I know from the decision. What you're asking is a clarification of what evidence they found in, basically to clarify how they came to the conclusion that based on the evidence that they had, they could come to their conclusion. This is not a situation where there's not evidence on the record.
There is evidence on the record. I agree with that.
On either, on either way.
Yes.
And if that, and if that's the case, and that's not the issue, then as I understand it, you've made the point that I can't see how they, I don't understand how they came to their conclusion on these items. And that more often than not happens when matters go to the Superior Court, and a decision of a board has not been detailed as to what they actually found across the board, who they found credible, that they didn't find credible, and the judge sends it back and says, write me a new decision so I understand what happened and what your decision was. But based on this record, I can't really tell that you've gone through the calculus of make, weighing the evidence, deciding which evidence is credible or not credible. So based upon what you've again reiterated to me, I don't, I don't, as legal counsel, don't see a reason for them to reopen anything as far as evidence taken. And you may put yourself in a, in a position of creating a rat's nest if you do.
Certainly familiar with the Superior Court remanding to this board decisions we've made in the past for us to do better findings of fact, not necessarily open up the record. And I can, that's kind of what I had in mind, but yes, that's what Mr. Burke had in mind. So.
So that's an appropriate analogy.
That's right. I didn't know, I didn't know we had the authority to instruct them what to do on the man, but you're telling us to do. I know the Superior Court certainly believes that has that authority. So if you feel that's, you know, that, I mean, I am concerned about the record as it exists, not being able to make a determination from their discussion, their decision, as to whether, how they assess credibility of the various evidence that's presented. And I'm looking for a better decision, so I can figure out as to whether or not it's supported by credible evidence in the record. I'm not trying to have this board at this time substitute its judgment for that of the Historic District Commission, because as I understand it, that's not our function at this point.
Correct. You don't have that power.
Correct. That would be when any variances come to the board, then that would be within our determination, our discretion. So.
I didn't expect that they would get more evidence when I expected.
What I expected is they would look at the evidence that was presented and provide a basis for the decision, which we don't have. And when we say in the record, I mean in the decision. That's, that's what I think is missing.
I, I would suggest that the amended motion be clear such that that is made explicit, so that everybody knows in writing exactly what your, your thoughts were aligned.
So then, I would say the, at least my sense of motion was the remand was based on the record as it exists.
Could, could you amend, amend your motion so that that, it's part of the motion that has been accepted and voted on by everyone?
Soon they have to read that motion. Well, very, and I, I will again attempt to express the motion that I was making, which was the, the decision.
Why don't we do this, and maybe I, maybe I can help. If you would make yet another amended motion, which will take the place of the former amended motion, and now in this present motion, make clear what your decision is with respect to the remand. You've already indicated what the, the areas are that you're, you're concerned with. If you could just amend that motion and say, in addition, you, exactly what you just said regarding the record, so that that's clear, and have everybody vote on that amendment to the motion, and I think you've done what you're looking for.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make this the second amendment to my earlier first amended motion, that would specify that the remand of the various issues previously outlined in my amended motion would be limited to the record as it exists on appeal. That's amended. I motion to amend.
All second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Record will be closed. No evidence will be entered nationally.